The price value of property must be used as its tax value and all real and personal property subject to taxation in the county and provided by P S one oh five two eighty-three. And whereas the Edchcombe County Board of Equalization Review, after the due notice as required by law, duly commenced in this meeting on April third, twenty twenty-three, and after taking and subscribing to the oath required by law, proceeded with the dispatch of its duty. And whereas the said Board of Equalization Review has heard and given due consideration to all complaints and appeals that have come to its attention from the taxpayers to owner-controlled taxable property assessed for taxation in Edchcombe County with respect to the valuation of such property or the property of others. And whereas the said Board has examined and reviewed the tax lists of each township for the current year, has listed and assessed all real property and personal property subject to taxation in the county which had been omitted from its said list and brought to its intention, has corrected all errors brought to its attention in the names of the persons subject to action to be taken on pending appeals to the Board in its description of property. And in the assessment and valuation for all taxable property appearing on said list, the said Board has increased or decreased or left unchanged the price valuations. Now therefore it be resolved by Edchcombe County Board of Equalization Review that all changes in names, descriptions, or valuations made by said Board shall be replicated upon the tax records of the county by correction, rebate, or additional charge. And that when all such changes have been given effect upon the tax records and the scrolls or tax books have been checked, totaled, and balanced, the same shall be and the same are hereby declared to be the permanent tax list assessment role for Edchcombe County for the year twenty twenty-three, subject to the provisions of Chapter one oh five of the General Statutes of North Carolina, this first day of May, twenty twenty-three.
And the motion is to approve that?
Yes, sir.
Questions? On the paper, let me know whether you want to sign aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? Here another resolution is approved.
Ms. Mungai has the copy to pass for everyone's signature. Thank you.
Do you want to act again?
That's the only action I have.
While she's moving those, if there are motions for adjournment, that's what we've just had to do and recommence record what we're pushing to make. Okay? Questions? On the paper, let me know whether you want to go sign aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? And none at this time, then we're announcing that the board will count a question. Thank you. I'm moving on. Public petitions. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, is there anybody here to speak their public petition for, in a, please don't call them out. Please don't call them out.
Hey, how you doing?
All right.
I just wanted to let y'all know a little something about what I had done. I went to Division of Highways.
Please state your name.
Window board. And I'm speaking in reference to Market Center Drive, which is right across the street from Walmart, next to the Bojangles and that by the hotel. I went to Division of Highways and asked them if they could go by and look at maybe get an underbrush, under the trees on the side cleared out, that I thought that would help the retail of Market Center Drive. The side of Walmart seems to be growing, but the other side of the road, which is where my property is, does not seem to be growing as rapidly. I know it's owner-controlled by one other person other than me, but I have four point three acres of land. It would be really nice to have a Chick-fil-A, a Zaxby, a sit-down restaurant, but I cannot do it without having the help of the county and the table. I'm asking that y'all would help with supporting the fact that we would like to see that area cleaned up. When you go to Williamson, when you go to Robertsonville, and I'm down towards the beach, you don't see trees in front of areas like that. If you, they went in and cleared out just the underbrush, it would at least open the area up that you would see the businesses. And I've already taken a step forward. I'm not asking y'all to take this step forward, but I'm asking for you to back me up on it. If you can make a phone call, if you can write a letter that you say, should we be a benefit to Edchcombe County? It would bring in jobs. And it, you know, I'm hoping going out and frying a chicken and flipping a hamburger. I don't know that my husband would tell you that, but I'm willing to try it. So that's all I needed to say.
What is the address?
It's, I think the address to the actual property is one oh three Market Center Drive. It's the vacant piece of land on sixty-four. There's no reason in the world that piece of land can't save. It's highly visible from sixty-four. No reason in the world. All the restaurants, everything's going across the street at the Walmart area. Load store development has bought more land over there and they're going to continue to develop, but in the meantime, I think it's land sitting there. I just need some help. I want to make Tarboro better. I want to give Tarboro what they need. There were two hundred and fourteen comments just about three or four weeks ago on the Tarboro two seven eight eight six page where they wanted restaurants. And they wanted somewhere to sit down and eat. I'm not talking about just fast food. We need to bring something in here to, to help the people that can't drive Rocky Mountain. They can't drive to Grateful, they can't drive to Wilson. We need to have a restaurant that when somebody comes to Tarboro, they can sit down. And it needs to be not a mom and pop thing. I think mom and pop great or is great, but a lot of people want national chains. I can ring the national chain, but I can't do it without cutting the trees. And I learned my lesson with cutting the trees one year. I went out there and cleaned all trees on my side by myself, haul them to the street. Do you agree? Division of Highways told me not to do that anymore because I had cut some and hung over on their side. So I don't want to do it myself. If they would let me, I would be glad, but I won't still go out there and do it, but I can't. So I'm just asking for the help behind it.
Brilliant.
See if we can try to make it open up so that businesses can be seen loads. Walmart, I'm not opposed to them getting any business, but I want to.
Brilliant.
Um, have any questions?
If the town of Tarboro, have you approached them already? Have they tried to help you since generally, I think their planning board kind of does?
Oh, Lord, I didn't answer this question, but I did approach the town of Tarboro. And they suggested that I go out and talk to Division of Highways, so that's what I did.
Are you asking for their support once you're on town?
Yes, I will be at the next meeting and ask them for their support. I'm taking a more step forward.
I guess, I come, we all know, we talk about public property, I don't know if there's nothing we can't do, but I'll just ask our staff if there's something that we can do to it, okay?
It's, it's considered the state has the right of voting.
Let's just stay right with it. State has control of that, okay? I don't know what we can do, but I certainly will ask our staff if there's anything we can do, uh, do that, but we know that if it's not our property, we know it won't go on through. If there's any assistance, if there is any assistance, please give it. Let's say on a thing that I think we can do, and I'll go second and say, if it's transportation, department of transportation, it's their property. And, uh, I don't know if there's anything we can, but I certainly will ask our staff to make the communications, okay?
Thank you, appreciate it. I say I'm off. One step of the line.
Okay. Is anybody here?
Good evening. Promote Dancy, one-two-seven Midway Lane Tarboro, Filco address, Melton address, P O Box one-three-nine-one, Pine Top's going to come around. First I bring you a message from the people that's trying to hear the meeting and the people that's trying to see the meeting. They ask me to hear y'all to talk into the microphone. I tell them I can't hear them for what to do, but I hope really, um. Also, um, I know this, you know, this probably young and you all, but, um, just reading about, well, I was at the meeting last week, but learning about how much money, um, Rocky Mountain City Manager is trying to pay the, um, Rocky Mountain Police. I know it has less to do with Edchcombe County. However, I thought it was kind of strange that, uh, local police department would make more money than the sheriff's office, uh, when they cover the whole county. I just can't, I just can't get over that in my head, but I'm on either one county commission or the Rocky Mountain City Council, so I have no control of it. But I do, I mean, to me, I just found a problem with that. And I know you probably can't match the sixty thousand, but I think, you know, um, y'all maybe do something to bring them up closer to that. I was late to get here right now because I, um, made about three rushes while doing towards my way, so I turned around and went back and I found out where they were, so I came back to this lean because I had promised for hours going to come in video. However, I can't hear you that clear in my, in my video also. So will you please just talk into the microphone? People want to hear you. I mean, you know, it is the business of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is anybody interested to? Anybody to pick up this?
You have before you a set of budget amendments. You'll see the first, uh, first few are those that require your approval. I'll mention a couple things about those. You'll see budget amendment number one, this is for Department of Social Services. This is to move funds from regular salaries to contract labor. As you know, we've had a number of vacancies in the departments that we're using, uh, some contract labor to fill in some of those gaps, so we need to move some money to cover some of those spaces. Budget amendment number two is, uh, you see reallocating funds within Department of Social Services. You'll see this is between the two lines, state foster home entitled for E adoptive. This is no additional appropriation, just moving funds between those two lines. Uh, budget amendment number three, you've heard reported, uh, previous meetings that has some major, um, water leaks in the county that our department, um, found. It finds out doing that, but it has increased our costs in contractual services. They were able to do some of those repairs. And so you'll see us moving, um, funds from other lines into contractual services. Budget amendment number four, uh, connected to that previous budget amendment, we're moving some funds, um, from postage and operating supplies into salaries, overtime, and utilities department. I do ask that you consider, um, the addition of a budget amendment. There's a copy of it, um, at your seat. It's labeled budget amendment four A. Give you a moment to, to jazz on that. So this is budget amendment from, uh, from Sheriff Atkinson, and you'll see that he is requesting to move some funds from retirement, salaries, and a few other lines to move in a handful of lines where it looks that those lines will fall short before the end of the fiscal year. So moving funds into those lines to cover, uh, what we expect to be shortfalls in those lines. In particular, I do want to draw your attention to, um, to the last three lines, which is capital outlay and salaries lines. In capital outlay, Sheriff is requesting to move, uh, funds into capital outlay to be able to purchase, uh, two vehicles, I believe it is, as well as fifteen body cameras. You know, you've heard Sheriff's challenge he's been facing trying to keep pace with the, the vehicles that he needs. We were able to purchase some, we're waiting for those to come. With the borrowing that we did some months ago, able to purchase some more next fiscal year, uh, but I do support moving funds from that salary line into capital outlay. Um, I also, I do want to remind you, you'll remember, we did a budget approach this year in order to be able to do the four percent cost of living, um, in four of our largest departments, we did a, a vacancy allowance, knowing that we will have lapse salary as we normally do. We were counting on that lapse salary to be able to cover the costs. It was about a million dollars of four percent cost of living. So we put in a vacancy allowance, basically negative numbers in Sheriff's Office, uh, Health Department, DSS, and Emergency Services to tie up some of that, that, uh, lapse salary so that we could use it towards, uh, doing cost of living. So Sheriff and I and his staff meant make sure that this deal leaves that vacancy allowance and just does not exceed the vacancy allowance in his budget lines. And he's also requesting funds to be moved to the salary lines. You'll see in the note of, I made a correction there. He is considering requesting extraordinary pay. You all have approved an extraordinary pay policy some months ago, and so he'll be making that request. We'll have to review that and determine if it meets the requirements of it, but we did want to go ahead and move funds into those lines enough to cover it in case that extraordinary pay gets approved. So that's somewhat of a busy budget amendment, what's going on there, but we want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions. The rest of the budget amendments are those that I approved and those that are approved within Finance Department. Both sets are for your information only. So requesting that you approve budget amendments one through four A.
Any questions?
Questions on four A? That's a, that's a large budget amendment to get sprung on day of, um, with the real context of what's happening there beyond a five-minute, three-minute conversation that we've just had. We're moving money out of salary into salary. Can we explain what's happening there?
Well, Sheriff has three different salary lines. He has salary for, is, you'll see it in the system as sheriff, and that is for deputies, office staffs. So it has salary line for sheriff, has salary line for jail or detention, and then the third is, um, salary line for E nine-one-one communications, I believe it is. I believe that's the third one there.
Why don't you come up?
So three, three different salary lines. If you'll notice, those first five numbers, like at the very top, ten, forty-three-twenty, and then those two at the bottom are ten, forty-three-ten, and ten, forty-three-twelve. So they're separate salary line, okay?
So I'm saying, I'm assuming forty-three-twenty is for sheriff?
Is for detention center or jail.
For jail.
Yes. And that's because he's, because he's had right much vacancy there, he's, he's got more lapse salary available than the other two.
So the current budget of that is a million dollars, and we're taking three hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of that budget. That means that we are accounting for thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent vacancy, thirty-two percent vacancy? Do we account for thirty-two percent vacancy in our jail staff?
Make it so we're clear for me.
How many vacant, how many opens you have?
Yes, right now we have, uh, frozen about ten, so we're looking at about twenty-five to thirty.
Twenty-five to thirty, how many staff total? In the jail?
We have sixty-two sworn deputy side, uh, I hate to misquote, on the jail side, so we're looking at probably about, uh, a little over fifties in jail side. That's a hard place to staff.
So are we not trying to staff that? Like what, what, I'm, when we take money from a salary, we can't staff, we can't backfill salary. So when we take money from the budget to move it to different things, we can't backfill that budget at that point?
I can answer your question. Your question was, are we not trying? That's one of the toughest positions in America to staff. I share with Mr. Evans. I want to come show you guys a video. Two of my staff almost got killed last month. So to answer your question, that job should be getting paid a hundred and fifty thousand bucks a year, okay? And, and if you allow me to finish that, Commissioner Thorne, um, I wanted to bring those two young ladies in here tonight so we can see their faces. One is sixty-five years old, one is sixty. And these two young men attacked them like they were animals. So it's hard to recruit that job. It's a tough environment to stay in for twelve hours and twenty-four hours. And I have two recruiters, uh, that stay on that job. It's one of my main recruiting jobs. So I hope that answers your question. I wanted to show that video tonight, but it's a hidden case. We're talking about salaries in here today, but we could have been talking about two funerals in here today. Those ladies showed great resolve, and one of the things that really, really shocked me, Commissioner Thorne, they came back to work in three days. They were sixty-five years old. If they were twenty-five and thirty years old, they wouldn't have came back to work. But they mean so much, and Edchcombe County means so much to them, that they come to work each and every day to make sure they provide a service. I thank God that I'm not talking about two funerals, um, because we're dealing with a high gang environment. I'm housing about thirty murderers in the Edchcombe County Detention Facility, a lot from the city of Rocky Mountain. And these young men, they don't care. And that's what we're dealing with. So we're trying our darndest to fill these positions, but in the meantime, the people that are working in there, they're working overtime and working on their days off so we can staff, so I don't get the complaints from moms that's asking Sheriff Atkinson, why is he locked down so much? Because one, he's a murderer, and two, he attacked two old ladies in jail.
Can I ask a rebuttal to that? Is we're moving thirty-two percent of the budget away from that instead of paying the people that are there doing shots?
I totally agree. I totally agree. I feel like we raised that, and I know, Mr. Evans, we're in the conversation, I totally agree with you. If we can help raise that pay, I'm totally, I'm totally agreeing with you. We make to get better staff, more professional staff.
I totally agree with you. I do want, I do want to clarify that these are one-time calls, like so capital outlay, and we would only, I would only recommend this at this stage of the fiscal year, because we're close, we got, you know, we're entering into May now, we've got really two months and ten days of salary left. So this is not the kind of move we'd make, you know, beginning or middle, because it'd be one-time capital purchase. Even if we approved, I approved the extraordinary pay, that's a one-time pay bonus. That is not in addition to the salary.
And as I understand what we're doing, based on much of that, because we would be putting, when we do the budget, we talk about another year, that would be maybe some excess money that we would have there, so we can do this. Is that correct?
That's right. And but.
Isn't when we look at these amendments, we're looking at a budget not based off the one million, because we said, okay, well, he was able to move three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars out of it at the end of the year. So then when we're looking at a budget, we're looking at, okay, well, he really only needs seven hundred thousand dollars.
The way that we budget is, we budget as if every position will be filled in the year. That's just been the county's approach to that. This year, we did a little bit different, as I mentioned a moment ago, knowing we have lapse salary. We did, we did tie some of that up in his department, his office, some other departments as well, knowing we have some, some available salary. But we always budget for every approved position fully, as if they'd be there July one and be there through June third.
So this is some lapse salary for positions that might not be.
That's it, all right. And also part of that, also, I just want to get up here and really talk about the shape and, uh, about fleet. I gave you guys a folder, it's really quick, twenty percent, so twenty-four percent of our current fleet has over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Sixty-one percent of our current fleet has over a hundred thousand miles. I've had vehicles break down at murder scenes and had to call tow trucks to come pick them up. And so as to your question, Commissioner, to move funding, um, to try to help out one budget, to try to get a few more vehicles is, is what I'm asking you guys for. Twenty-four of our vehicles, over a hundred and fifty thousand miles, we got several that's pushing up close to two hundred thousand miles. When we replace vehicles in our fleet, we move these vehicles to full personnel and school resource out, so we don't get rid of these vehicles. We just ship them down in our fleet. As of right now, we have about nine SUV brand SUVs that are in Hendersonville, uh, but I only can afford two of them. And I know come July one, they're going to go sky high to other sheriffs, other police departments are going to pick them up. If you look on that second, uh, the second pricing list, twenty twenty-three, police seven-seventy is forty-two thousand one hundred. So that outgoing funding that Commissioner Thorne is talking about, try to wish to purchase a couple of vehicles out of that outgoing salary, uh, outgoing budget amendment. Uh, one vehicle with an outfit, vehicle outfitted and mobile radio is sixty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, you guys see what the cost of two is and see what the cost of three is. Up coming fiscal year, the capital outlay, I'm going to get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for vehicles, and you guys complain, let's see, that's all that allowed me to get is one vehicle, uh, come July one. Uh, as in the past, just something to consider, uh, moving to the new budget, if, uh, the, best going thing right now is enterprise leasing. They have confirmed with Herford County, Halifax, Shawan, Bertie, Columbus County, Caswell, you'll see with the deal with Rocky Mountain Police Department, Minn Hall, the MRI, Bergard, Warsaw, Aberdeen, and Nashville, that currently in talks with Nash County, Tarble PD. Part of this up, twenty eighteen, our fleet is in a tough shape. And what you want is for, and you guys can see a picture that's behind it, what you want is to see, have our deputies constantly moving around over five hundred square feet of county. They do a good, great job at it. Uh, we don't want them breaking down. Uh, you guys see the red list at the back, the inventory list? That's in the red, so for you guys to look at once you be home. Um, so with the outgoing budgeting, yes, uh, I need those funds to make sure I have equipment and make sure I keep a couple of staff that's been working overtime with some of the worst people in America. So yes, that three hundred thousand dollars is going to, you're at great use, uh, for equipment and extraordinary pay. I'm glad you asked that question. Yes, sir.
Repairs are not going, chief?
Sir?
Repairs are not going down, is that correct?
And repairs are killing us. Repairs are killing us. If we did do the leasing, um, and if a vehicle is continuing to have some of the same issues, they'll come back and get that vehicle. Uh, repairs are really costing issues. And myself, uh, county manager, we've been in talks about having a county maintenance person. That's, that's something big that we talked about. Oil changes, tire rotations, things of that nature, to save the county money. Uh, those things we've been in talk, being repairs, yeah, that costs us money. And of course fuel is going up, so we got to look at, so a lot of the money is that will move as well. We had to move money to cover the cost of fuel for the remainder of the year. So that money, uh, is going to be well spent.
Any other questions?
Two comments. It's, it's more of just, I wish I had time to, to digest what was happening, and it's not me coming off of, off the work that you do or anything, but when you're presented with a four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar budget amendment at a meeting, and you got three minutes to digest what's happening, and that's, that's my job on this side of the table, that's my job.
Right.
That's what I'm elected to do. So you're elected to do that?
Right.
I understand. So I, I, it's my due diligence to ask questions.
Right. And, and, and I don't mind doing it. If you guys look at that line item, just for example, one, zero, four, three, ten, five, four, nine, nine, zero, zero, like Mr. Linus, so you guys understand that. That nine thousand dollars is going to go to, there was a baby that was dumped, nineteen ninety-four, in Edchcombe County. New system in place.
Because he responded to his question. It ain't like he had a problem with it.
And guess what? It's going to be a hundred and fifty thousand.
He just responded to his question.
But those are the kind of things that I'm doing. When you see that Mr. Linus, nine thousand dollars, just to find out who murdered this baby in nineteen ninety-four. So yes, I want to ask those questions so I can give you full disclosure.
And then I understand why that was not presented to them before this meeting.
I think you guys need to know.
I just think we need to be diligent about moving that kind of money to make sure that we're okay moving that kind of money. And I, I can get your explanation there. And then I just want to voice my support that I'm all about the police program. I think that that is the way that we need to, uh, have asked that we look at that.
Definitely.
Any other questions?
I have a question about a suggestion.
Go ahead.
From Mr. Thorne, and as it said, we should have this prior to getting to the meeting.
Correct, correct.
So that he would have had time to call and ask you or ask the sheriff those questions, rather than just having to have all that discussion at the meeting. So I would suggest as soon as, as soon as it's available, that we at least have it twenty-four hours before we have to try to vote on something.
Well, I, I certainly understand that we try our best to get all budget amendments, big or small, to you in your agenda package. Sheriff did send that over, uh, last week. He and I had some discussions about it, had some changes that needed to be made, and we were working on that even up to this morning, he and I and some of his staff were talking through that. I certainly understand if the board doesn't feel comfortable, you're welcome to table it if you want to, and you can take it up at your budget, uh, work session, or if you feel comfortable adopting it. I do recommend that you approve.
I think that probably is that process in terms of, of when we, in terms of, the time to do some things, sometimes these things are time sensitive. And the time they come in, and the time we give them, the matters might not have the time to, but it is, we can make the determination if, at this board, in terms of what I was going to deal with. And at this time, I'm going to consult the board on that.
If I could say, Mr. Sheriff, I do want you to please. If I could say, Mr. Chairman, I do want you to please do keep in mind, particularly for those vehicles, they're in very short supply. And I know Sheriff, every day goes by, doesn't have a man who has a chance, he, he has to lose enough vehicles.
Is there motion to approve our budget amendment one through four? Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they are approved.
Thank you, board. Thank you.
Um, next.
Um, item is regarding bad debt write-off, write-off in Health Department. Um, you've seen this before. Um, the Health Department does have a bad, bad debt write-off policy, which states that a patient's account will be handled as bad debt when there has been no activity on the account for more than six months. This does not mean that there will be no further efforts to collect the debt. In fact, if there is any new activity on the account, for example, the patient shows up at the Health Department for additional services, then the account can be, or it is reactivated. This action is an accounting method, whereas the written, the written off debt no longer shows on our books as a receipt. Attached to this report for your consideration, you'll see the total amount is four thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, this did go before Human Services Board at their last meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend this to.
Motion? Question? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved.
Um, item C is regarding a franchise agreement for non-emergency medical tran- transport. You'll see that we received a franchise, uh, application for Bertie Ambulance Service doing business as Eastern Medical Transport. Um, this will be to provide wheelchair van and ambulance transportation on a non-emergency basis. You'll see this comes with a recommendation from our Emergency Services Director, Mr. Antoine Brown. As he points out, this, uh, would be a benefit to the county of having another non-emergency ambulance available as needed. This is high demand. Um, you, you've seen more of these here lately from us than you used to in the past. And the reason is, uh, we try to do as much of that in-house as possible. Our primary mission is for emergency transport. And with being short staff, we have to make sure that those emergency calls are staffed adequately. And so it has come to the point that we need to have more options available for both our hospital service, uh, providers, as well as, um, nursing facilities in the county. So, uh, this does come with a recommendation from our Emergency Services Director, and I recommend it, um, as well.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved.
The Recreation Mini Grant Program was created to offer grants of up to two thousand dollars each to community-based organizations that provide recreational facilities and/or activities. The Review Committee met on April fourth to discuss and rank fifteen proposals received. Each proposal was rated based on the project description, timeline, area served, number of individuals served, duration of program, budget, feasibility, and the capacity of the organization. The committee recommends the ten projects in the amounts listed in the attached document to receive funding. I will note that seven of the ten, uh, have been previously funded, uh, through this program, and three are new programs. I do agree with the committee and recommend that you approve the grant agreements for the ten programs as presented and authorize me to execute agreements with you.
Motion? Second.
Second.
Question?
Question?
Right next.
Um, Christine Community Outreach, that's out of the way.
Um, they're on the northern end of the county, I think on Spade's Chapel Road. Um.
Christine?
Yeah. Yes. Mm-hmm. They provide, um, activities for seniors primarily. Um, they have a lot of activities going on now. I'm, I'm just, we, I've just learned up here recently, but. Um, Ms. Deborah Colan, our Aging Director, has been familiar with them for a while. And so it seems like they're doing good work.
What about the lease of these outlets, Senator?
Lease of these outreach? I can't remember right offhand where they're located, just seeing the description, that they serve seniors and veterans as well. Uh, in rural areas, they provide nutrition, physical movement, um, and activities, uh, for seniors and veterans. And I can follow up and find that's where they are. I can't remember.
Any other questions? Do they, I got one? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved. Next.
Next on the agenda is regarding your map review officer. Um, general statute requires the board to designate our resolution staff, who will serve as our mapping and land records review officer, as well as alternate review officers. Presented for your consideration is the attached resolution to designate Mr. Ray Wilson, our GIS Coordinator, as our review officer. And Teresa Lewis, Kate McHill, Katina Braswell, and Mr. Brian McIntyre as our alternate review officers. I recommend that you approve the resolution as presented.
Motion?
Motion?
Second.
Question? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved. Next, Mr. Chairman.
I, I do wanna correct myself. The, uh, on the Recreation Mini Grants. The, uh, the lease of these is the one that's on Spade Chapel Road. Um, next item is, uh, regarding the National Day of Prayer. I want to thank Commissioner Harris for, uh, bringing that back to our attention. You'll see that there is a resolution, um, in your packet that I recommend that you consider too.
Motion?
Second.
Question? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved.
And just for the public's knowledge, if you weren't aware, uh, National Day of Prayer is this Thursday, May fourth. There will be, um, a gathering here at town, uh, at Town Square at twelve o'clock, I believe this was Harris, this Thursday. Um, item G is, uh, requesting that you surplus certain equipment the county has. You may recall, I think it was in two thousand and eight, that we received a grant that paid for about two-thirds of the cost of a natural gas vehicle fleet that we have. We had ribbon cutting, these Honda Civics had decals on it. Um, and so it paid, we helped pay for the cars as well as the refueling equipment. Uh, we've had them on the road since two thousand and eight. Because they, uh, are powered by compressed natural gas, it limits how far you can go with it, because you can't fill them up everywhere. Uh, but we've gotten good service out of them over the years. I will say that the refueling equipment, um, we have spent some money on that over the years. That hasn't lasted as long as we hoped it would. But, uh, we believe that these vehicles are at their, um, end of stage. In particular, the, the refueling equipment needs some work done. We recommend that we don't put that kind of money back in. So recommend that you surplus, uh, these, um, five vehicles, as well as the related, uh, refueling equipment.
So we're getting out there?
We're getting there, but, yes, sir.
That's not been sold, though. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved.
Item H is regarding our amendment to our pay plan. You recently approved adding a community paramedic position to our pay plan. This position was, uh, will provide community-based healthcare with a focus on opioid overdoses. Opioid selling plans will pay for this position and its related costs. Since advertising and interviewing candidates for a position, staff has recognized the need for two changes. First, staff recommends that a community paramedic position be moved to grade nineteen from eighteen. Considering the uniqueness of the work of this position and the skill level and experience needed for the program to be successful, a higher salary is needed to attract the right person. Secondly, considering that the additional funding we will receive from the second round of opioid settlements will enable us to hire more than one community paramedic in the future, we will need one to be in a supervisor role to better manage the effort in the field. Therefore, it's recommended to add a community paramedic supervisor position at grade twenty. You have copy of opposed job description for that. I support the recommendation of our staff and ask that you approve the revised pay plan and the community paramedic supervisor job description as presented.
Motion? Motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Question?
I just.
Yeah, yeah, something. Go ahead, Mr. Thorne.
I have a little discussion about this thing. I, I'm in favor of this, but is there, are there any restrictions on that money in using that settlement amount of time, or is it?
We will receive it for eighteen years.
Okay, so. Yeah, because my discussion today sounded around the deep part of that. On the subject of the project, uh, statute, or our center, one of us concerned. We're moving too fast, just because we got the money, it's available. And then I, I'm, I'm not worried for them to do that, because I think what we're basically all put into it and planning for. And I, or either of them.
Absolutely. Normally, we are hesitant about adding positions based on grant button. But being that we're gonna receive this funding for eighteen years, so we feel like it's a good move for this program.
Yeah.
But, well, it's time of merit, eighteen years.
It fluctuates slightly. Um, it averages around a hundred and fifty thousand a year. They give us the, the, they give us how much we're gonna receive for the eighteen-year period, at least for the first, uh, settlement. Um, and it changes just a little bit and never goes under a hundred thousand. It averages around a hundred and fifty thousand. You'll recall, we received really the first two years really together. So you approved the budget amendment, uh, a few months ago. So we use some of that money for upstart cost of the, of vehicle for this person, some equipment and what have you. Um, we have gotten word that the second round of settlement, which the first was, was with the drug manufacturers. The second round is with, uh, some pharmacies, large national pharmacies. Um, and we've been told that the second round of funding will be close, not quite as much will be close to the same amount as we're receiving in the first round. So you all approved the document a couple of months ago that said basically we will participate in that. So we expect in the next month or so to get some additional information on that.
And it appears to be, it's possible that some of this will be revenue reduced, because it's.
Yeah, in anything.
Some of this insurance will be involved, so I think most of these positions has a possibility of being revenue reduced.
That's right. In anything, any service that we provide that ensures Medicaid eligible will be due.
Any other questions? Directly.
You asked it. Okay.
Uh, all in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved. Next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we ask, uh, that you, um, recess as, uh, board commissioners and convene as the governing board of Ward Sewer District Six.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are now, uh, sitting at the board, the governing board of Ward District, Ward Sewer District Number Six.
Yes, sir. As you know, we have funds committed from USDA Rural Development to renovate and improve the sewer system in District Six, which is Town Princeville. The project includes two million, six hundred and nineteen thousand of, uh, revenue bonds, which must be approved by the local government commission. Uh, it also includes four million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand in grant. Um, attached for your consideration is a resolution that requests the LGC to approve the issuance of debt through these revenue bonds. I recommend that you, as government body of Ward Sewer District Six, approve the resolution as presented.
Motion?
Secondly?
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved.
Uh, I will let you know, Mr. Chairman, board, that, uh, we were originally scheduled, uh, expecting to go to the LGC tomorrow, but that's been pushed back to next month. Um, so there was a little miscommunication when our bond council had some kind of information that they need to submit. So we'll be going for the LGC at their, uh, at their June meeting.
Is there motion to adjourn as talking about Ward Sewer District Six and the zone meeting, on the way to missions?
No move.
Second.
Question? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved. At this time, we got a performance to the girl, Carl McGee, with what a record. We have, uh, Mr. Richard Anderson, private secretary of, um, elderly support, regular career partner. And, um, Mr. Thoron has indicated an interest in serving in the position department. Uh, held by the stroke, moving, if there are no objections on Mr. Thoron's partner. Do I hear objections? And, uh, is there motion to appoint Mr. Anderson, Mr. Thoron, to the Carolina, uh, get ready, what?
No move.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved. After they've done this, for the view, anything that you thought was intentional?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer your questions.
Is there motion to approve? Second? Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none is approved. Uh, contract for the deal approved, the seventh.
Yes, sir. You see, you have the contract for Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company, who's our auditing firm for doing the FY twenty-three audit. Uh, this also includes, uh, the audit contract for the Tourism Development Authority. And a total of eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, we also have, uh, C and C Fire Apparatus, uh, five hundred and five thousand, this is purchased, uh, fire truck, um, for King's Front Industrial Park. I'm gonna have Mr. Daniel Webb come in to explain a little, a little bit about what is it that we're purchasing. You'll recall, we are, that this is with funds that we received from state appropriations this year. Um, they have funds available to purchase two trucks and some other equipment. Um, you also have in here change order number four for our contract with Simmons Industry. This is the upgrade on our firewall system, both here and, and the, um, and the courthouse is actually decreased in contract due to time change and, uh, reduced labor costs. I had in here to be determined contract with federal lobbying services. Um, we received several, seven proposals. Uh, staff and I interviewed three of those, uh, firms on Friday. I plan to bring a recommendation to you tonight. I'm waiting for some follow-up on one of those before I feel like I can adequately make a recommendation, um, to the board. So I will, uh, ask that you hold that for me. Uh, before you take action on that, I would ask if you could come up and show a little bit more information on the, that piece of equipment.
My name's Daniel Webb. I'm emergency services coordinator for the county. I'm a commissioner of the year for y'all. Um, so what we're presenting is, uh, the county's first purchase of a fire truck. It'll be their own fire truck, uh, to, um, start fire services for the county, uh, primarily for the King's Corner area. Um, you should have it, uh, late, we've got a packet that we put out. Uh, but we'll go through this real quick. Um, so, so take note of the VIN number. Uh, we actually have a truck that is being built, that we have ran across, a really good deal. Um, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that deal as we're going through. Uh, it is a twenty twenty-three truck, brand new, has not made it off the production floor yet. Uh, this is a, kind of a, a diagram of the truck. It is a two thousand gallon cement pump. Uh, thousand gallon water tank on it, eighteen foot light tower, uh, hundred foot booster reel, uh, side mount pump. Um, but this is the actual diagram of the truck. Uh, this truck is actually being manufactured for a fire department in North Carolina. Uh, and I guess they forgot they were getting a deal, uh, which bad for them, good for us, I guess. So, uh, this is a truck, uh, you can see the stages, um, this all come off, uh, Ferrera's website. Uh, body ground stages, the three pictures up top, that gives you an idea of how the, the body is built. Uh, pump stage, the next three pictures were the pump sacs that are being put into the body. Uh, and then the final stage, that's the actual truck on the bottom, uh, that we're discussing right now. Um, if you take note, right there, that VIN number is the same VIN number that is on the packet. Uh, so that is the truck and question that we're talking about. Um. And any questions about the, the truck so far?
It's special on, what has three dollars?
Um, it's, it's red, it's a fire truck.
It's all red.
Um, the patrol car is, is high, but the fire apparatus are real high. So in the packet that you have that we left up there, we've actually got a couple of parts from a couple of manufacturers. They are actually right here. So the one we're looking at is five hundred and five thousand, two thousand gallons per minute, a thousand gallons of water. We did look at a broken dollar cut from top now. We were not planning on purchasing a fire truck this early. We were looking at doing a order and building one, and the build time on it right now was about two years. So if we ordered one right now tonight, someone sitting here that I can, once y'all say, go ahead and order one, he'll order one. But the price on that truck right there is going up over a hundred thousand dollars if we order it tonight. So the trucking question that the other department was building and it's about thousand, we're going to save over a hundred thousand dollars.
When, when, when do you make the statement on the truck? When you order it or after you?
So we would, we would pick it up. It's already, so this particular truck was ordered by somebody else. They backed out on it, so it's kind of like a demo truck. Kind of like going to the car lot and they don't have the car that you want, but they got a demo to drive. So this is kind of the, the same situation. We did stake out a point pumper. We talked to several manufacturers and all of their prices are coming in at that six sixty mark. The packet that was left on your desk in front of you, you should have a single page on the very back of that packet. This is the price that he quoted us today. We got this price today, so we didn't send it out earlier. But the price, including the light tower, exactly like this truck is right now, would be six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars if we ordered it right now. So we're getting a considerable savings over a hundred thousand dollars on this particular fire truck. The, you're probably going, what are you going to be able to pass me in all the fire trucks right now? Because we really won't put out on a loop in this half, correct? So phase one, we'll go ahead and start with part-time employment, part-time firefighters, staff that from eight to five, Monday to Friday. And they'll kind of go out and answer calls as needed. So any fires that we happen, happen to have today, they would go to get with this particular apparatus to be able to help out. Edgewood County, we did have a short file of volunteers during the daytime. Everybody works during the daytime, which is a good thing. They have some volunteer fire departments. We don't have anybody going to fires like we did twenty, thirty years ago. So this apparatus will actually help with that, and it will actually put a full class A pumper, as we call it, or engine, on a person. But when the volunteer department happens to be a little slow getting out, this is going to be there.
Where would be housed?
At our current E O C location. You can put it inside there. So we've got a place to put it. We'll look at part-time personnel over the next couple of months if we get this one in place. It'll still take a few months to get every auto equipment on it, but probably in the next three, four months, we'll be looking to do a part-time staff. Phase two would be doing full-time twenty-four hour staff. And then they would start covering the Kingsborough area on a twenty-four hour basis. And then phase three, whenever we get a building built and are moving forward with that, we don't have timeframes on this, because it's kind of dependent upon how fast things are moving at Kingsborough. So, but the phase three, we're having a full building built out there and staffing at twenty-four seven.
And again, I ask what happens to the Harts East Fire Department that's already there?
So if you remember the presentation I did at the last year, we're planning on leaving the Harts East Fire Department in place. When the county finally does take over the phase three, we would cover just the four point five per mile, or four point zero five per mile of the industrial park. And then they would cover the district that they currently have. And then the two would help support each other.
So we change whatever.
That grant is one point five million or one million?
One point five million.
So we're saving money on this truck. Are we able to spend that money on other equipment?
Well, Mr. Prowlby, back there loves me, you know, say, let's wait and order another truck right now, but we do wait and look around at some options. I'm not saying he's not going to be the best price, but we just got this price, so we would like to look around a little bit before we say something on the, on the, the second. We would like to go and get free one first.
When we submitted that grant, we could spend it on whatever equipment we wanted within a timeframe?
Well, we specified two trucks. Of course, we were estimating two trucks and some other equipment. We turned out the, and some other things. And of course, that was all going to depend on cost.
And that has to be spent by twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven.
Any questions?
And we're behind your question earlier. Have you approved this tonight? There's a, a sales agreement that you'll sign, we'll send that, that'll hold it, we'll pay for it once it's actually delivered.
All of you will sign?
Yes, all. When it's delivered.
So it's under contract?
It will be if you approve.
We have that from a state grant. We have that from a grant in our fund balance now.
State is helping us, it's paying for it.
Fairly. We, we will have that contract as soon as we get this motion. He's paid on us. So we're going to accept it or reject it.
So, so the recommendation is to approve the two contracts, change order, and the two contracts include the purchase of the fire truck.
That may be my motion.
Yes, sir.
I have one question. About the audit contract. That's our full audit contract. At one point, we had two audit contracts going, but we're, we're just eighty-four thousand dollars on the audit that we got.
As we had sort of overlapping audits going at one time. This is for FY twenty-three.
The entire contract, contract for the audit is eighty-four thousand.
I, I, I do, like on the office, when I see, we, we're on the TDA. Uh, I see they got a budget set up that keeps their sales fair.
Yes, sir. We, we talked about that.
Well, I said they offer to test that. Okay. They got, they got a balance there. They got a balance that's not being used, okay? So we're saying build them. All right. Did I get a motion? Did I get a second?
A second.
I'm the motion.
Okay, exactly. We got a motion, second. Go ahead, give him a question. All in favor of that, if nobody's going to sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So if he is approved. At this time, is there a? A motion to? Where am I?
Just move to the department report.
I'm on the contract. Departmental reports. Uh, you've got these reports in your agenda package. Anything that you'd be able to focus on, attention to that was there?
I did add an updated sales tax report there at your, at your seat. I do want to call your attention to our office on aging, our ARPA funded program, I should say, ARPA engaging funded program. So you'll recall that of our ARPA funds, which we took the standard allotment for revenue replacements, so all of this has become county general fund money. We designated twenty-five thousand dollars of that to be used through our office on aging, and so they have some activities. One of those is, you'll see, we're planning to provide very similar to our recreation mini grant, mini grants to nonprofits and agencies who provide services for senior citizens. These agencies, some are small, some, you know, well established, well known, they're critical for us and our arms to reach out and help serve our citizens. So we will open and request proposals from these agencies for these small grants up to fifteen hundred dollars. It could be, you know, anything related to the service that they provide, except for no salaries or stipends for staff. I think this is, you know, these would be small investments, I think, that go a long way in helping us build our partnership and relationship with these agencies to help us to serve our senior population. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Right. Now, can, on organization that we see, one of these recreation mini grants, still a part of this grant?
They could, as long as it's not for the same.
Good question.
Any other questions, any reference to the department report? There are none management report.
First, Mr. Chairman, to the board, I'm very happy to introduce to you tonight, county's, I must say, first chief financial officer. I'd like to invite Ms. Linda Barfield to come to the podium. She went through a very rigorous process. You know that we use a recruiting firm. They took her and the other candidates to the paces, and she came through applying college. Today is her first day. And, and we're very excited that Adler just wanted to introduce her formally to you and give her the opportunity to make a few comments.
We're ready to go.
First, I want to say thank you. It's an honor to be standing before you all tonight. I'm really excited about the opportunity to return back to Edgewood County and serve in this capacity and to serve under Eric's leadership. It's a really exciting time with Eric and growing out a new vision statement. So I'm looking forward to doing my part in earning our citizens' trust through upholding our public funds through transparency and with the government. It's nice to be here.
We're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep, and as you know, we've had some issues that I think that Edvinson's leaving us in good shape. Well, well, but she's, she's leaving that, right? Okay, she's still serving, okay. Okay, okay, but I, I would say, uh, uh, you know, if there's anything that you, if we've got issues, we want to know, okay? And we want to know how to correct those issues. We want to still talk about finances. So make those requests and so that Mercedes can, so that we can help you do your job, okay? Okay? I think we're, we're ready for that, and we'll be very well received, and we want to help you return home, you, you deal, we want to help you stay, okay?
All right. Thank you and understood.
Pete O'Brien.
Go ahead.
I do want to let you know, as, as you call her name, Ms. Edvinson has just been a godsend for us, and she's done a fantastic job. She pressed pause on her retirement to come and work with us, and we're grateful for that. She retired in, in December, I think, and came working in January. She had a zero break. But she's been wonderful, and she, she will continue to work with us alongside Linda through the rest of fiscal year, helping with the transition. Then beyond that, she has, she's let us know that she's available to come back and assist as much as we can. So we certainly appreciate her work. Just, we've got lots of meetings still ahead of us, so just bringing back this list of upcoming meetings ahead of you, we have been able to check three of them all at least, but we have a few more meetings. Next of which will be Budget Committee's first meeting this Thursday at four P M. We will meet in conference room two sixty. We have the TDA financial report, monthly report sharing with you, update on state funding for broadband design, inform the board. Previously, we had Cloudwise had got notification they received of state funding, great grant funding for Edgewood County. There had been some changes and corrections, corrections in their application, and the applications were rebrained. And so they now do not have the winning grant proposal for Edgewood County. Now it is, it is Bright Speed or Connect Holding to LLC doing business as Bright Speed, receiving four million dollars from the state for broadband deployment. They had my first great meeting with them, some of their team members, earlier today to talk about getting this project up and running. I did let them know that this is a project that's very, very important to you all. We're very interested to know how this is going to go before it starts. So I would recommend that you consider scheduling a work session. I know you've got plenty of meetings already, but I would recommend that we schedule a work session dedicated to just this, so that you can hear directly from them. You can see the planned scope of the project that, that has been funded. I do want to make a note here, in your agenda pack, you'll see the page that has the map connected to it. Now, when they submitted their application, current providers had the opportunity to protest as, as part of the process. So originally, they were planning to serve over four thousand households in the project due to the protests that has been reduced to just under twenty-nine hundred households. But that's only with what's going to be funded with great grant. They plan to invest their own funds to reach many more homes than that, and they'll share the details with you when we have that work session. So, Mr. Chairman, if you want, you and I, after the meeting, to look at some potential dates, we can float that by the full board and, and pick a date that works for it.
We will. Okay. Hold on, hold on. We can do that. What about, we can do it, we'll be here when it works.
On seventeen.
On seventeen. And it's not necessarily board up and you might have to schedule it out with the budget section for staff, what is it? We got an objection from the board.
So looking at blocking off, say, from ten to two, we normally do the budget work session till about twelve?
And I'm, I'm saying all ten to three.
Ten.
Might take months.
Okay.
An objection from the board. So we, it will be followed by the work session, and that will be in the agenda, I would say.
Yes, sir.
I see you got some problem in the sound there. Were you, were you questioning that?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, might be nothing.
One more time.
Great.
Date seventeen.
It's a seven issue. It's a, it's a one that he's, that we're calling especially, you know, the budget work session.
So we were already planning to meet at ten o'clock, maybe seventeen, for the budget. We will add on broadband. All right. So next is, as you know, we do some work, we've been involved in that, and creating a vision statement for the county. You see in your agenda packet, what we're referring to is our two-sided vision statements, vision, our vision for the county from our residents' perspective. And also a vision for our organization, our eternal vision, how we can be the organization that we need to be, so that our county can be the county that we know that it can be. So just want to share with you the final version of that. I did, as I had mentioned at our meeting last week, joint meeting with the school board, I held a meeting last week on the twenty-sixth, Wednesday. Invited, I sent an invitation to all of you, invited stakeholders. We had thirty people to, just thank, thank Mr. Commissioner Harris for attending. Have a really good feedback. You've heard me say our call to action is get off the list. So we, we took some time to look through some of those lists and talk in detail about some of those lists where we need to focus. So we, through that work, we, we're looking at really three categories, and that being youth and family, workforce, health, and, of course, that's my, I should have been saying. But looking at four focus areas, we also started to identify agencies that are already doing good work in any of those areas. Because we don't want to create the wheel. If somebody's doing that work, we don't want to support them. We want to be a part of that, help them to expand the work that they are doing. But also look at where there are some gaps. So this is going to be long-term work, and you will keep hearing about this from me and from our staff and from our partners, but we're off to a good start on that. And I'll certainly be keeping you posted on the work we're doing. And as we just talked about, budget work session, I do ask for you to call a special meeting on May seventeenth to, to discuss FY twenty-four budget and now also great grant.
Can I get a motion?
Hello?
Second. Questions? All in favor of that, if nobody's going to sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And none of the special meetings called. At this time, there's no commissioners.
Now, with the special meeting coming up on seventeen, will we have any information on a study by that time?
We, we, we will have some information. It likely won't have the full study completed by that time. We, we, we will have some information, it likely won't have the full study complete by that time. But they are moving along with that, they've been doing a lot of work on that.
Uh, I was told by, you know, process and county commissioners, that they make sure we utilize all the new N D A students that they've been able to acquire, should anything in any area that the county needs help with, we've paid dues, we have access to them, so let's please make sure we take advantage of them. Um, now, if the chairs of risk management for North Carolina Association, I would encourage you and all your department heads to take advantage of all these classes that are offered through risk management. Uh, you know, they give us a report, and it looks like we've signed up, but we've not taken advantage of the classes that are available to us. So once again, I say, if there's any fatal news, if there's something we can take advantage of, we need to do so. Okay, so if you go on the website and take a look yourself, may, um, share, there are several for your folks as well that need to take advantage of. I got the board a little bit disappointed that we've not taken advantage of offer. Okay? Um, I need to give a caution to Samantha Hughes about a water tap situation. I guess it's a new subdivision, Johnson Barnes. Um, that, is there a reason to take us so long, we don't have help, or it's just workload, or what it is? Or like I said, folks talk to you at church and they ask you about something like, I'm not in the water department, but I'll call somebody. So he, he, he's, I want to thank him for assisting with that. Also want to thank him for, um, sewage problem that I've been totally aware of in a long time area of really need to call, but I just want to thank you for service. Uh, but on that, want to interview gentlemen, ladies. If you, um, say that you're a Democrat, we would love to see you on next Monday night at six P M. But Edson County Democratic Convention, we never had it on Monday, uh, but that's when we wind it up. Uh, to make sure that we can get it in before the first congressional district convention, which is on May twentieth. And that's gonna be at Edson Community College at McAdams Auditorium at nine A M. So you put both of those dates, what is that day? Uh, May twentieth, that's the first congressional district convention at nine A M. Edson Community College, McAdams Auditorium, Edson County Democratic Convention, it's Monday, May eighth, at six P M. And that will be in the McAdams. What time is it, eight? Sixty, um, six on the eighth. Now, eight A M on the twentieth. And I hope I'll be able to see some of you on Thursday, but naturally, a prayer to all, if you cannot, and please, be in prayer, we hope you are at twelve o'clock.
You know, permissions. Here and on, can I back one turn?
Yes, sir.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we scheduled for closed session to discuss economic growth, and if that is, is that correct?
Yes.
Can I get a motion for a closed session right now? Exactly. Question? All in favor, let me know by voting on our hands, aye. All opposed, there are none, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, coming, at this time, we will be going to closed session.
Recording stopped.
Hey, man, hey, do I get that thing, man? Hey, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.